So how much more should we go for?
Yeah.
He adds wood to the tree sale.
So he can sell it tonight.
I think it's a little station.
I'm assuming it's...
Pull it back here.
For sure.
I'm gonna say, I mean, you see the street on my other page.
Let's say, I don't know where this is going. You know, it's so many lines. I guess what I would be, this would be the...
Yeah, three hours today.
Oh, they did.
Dance.
Come sit up here. Come sit up here, so you can watch us.
Yes, yes, yes.
In the official seats.
I don't know.
You have that dedication, but here.
It'll look like that, and it'll bring up your ass on it. The press escape to get out of there. Back in excellent place. I'm back and better than ever.
I understand, Sand is standing upstairs.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I don't know if you can come down.
Sand is literally upstairs.
Is anybody talking to him here?
No.
It doesn't feel like the agenda.
Is that why we're in the basement? Cold is pretty good right now. Well.
Cold is now cheaper to give than being there, so it's subsidized.
Subsidized. We keep getting with...
So more cold for everyone.
Yes.
Hey, how you doing? First meeting today. Pretty excited.
Okay. Oh, okay. It does, but I'm not sure.
It's been pretty long. Yeah, two hours.
Yeah, that's what I was... You share the information. Yes.
You got the real trouble, I'm not sure.
Okay. So we need to... I promise I don't make a difference.
Like you explained...
They're sticking out. I thought I tried to go over them just yesterday. I guess we'll have to figure out.
I'd open it all.
Okay, here's some good shirt.
He's like that, but he...
I have places to point.
You have some smaller birds.
Is he... Is there...
Well, just, I just took the shot.
When you... Looks like a little robot that's gonna talk to you.
Yeah, no one... No, not knowing.
Happy holidays.
Good to see you.
Hello. Good to see you. Yeah.
I guess you start with that again.
What's that? No, okay. I won't ask. Yeah, a little safer.
I'm locking closing in there, but now it's good. Is this yours?
It is dry.
That's why that's why he has.
No. Paper is good.
Hey, paper. I know this idea.
It's dust.
Yeah.
Did you really?
Oh, and then again. Yeah, transportation's fantastic.
We're ready? Ready? All right. If we're ready, we start the meeting. First off, does anyone have public comments for anything not related to something on the agenda? Nobody? In that case, we'll start with ninety-eight Love Lane. And the outstanding item that we're gonna take a look at was the design guidelines for two lots on the property. This is sort of the last item that we needed to look at before the, before we looked at the decisions on the possible subdivision. Imei, maybe you could give us some background information?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, you recall, we distributed a copy of the first draft of the design guidelines. The applicant took that with his representative, did some changes, and you made another round of changes. Yesterday, I kind of put those together and then met with Rob on discussing, you know, here's the latest draft, what do we think? He's had some, he had some edits for me that I've put into, if you look at what I handed up, the second set of them are having read kind of the outstanding issues that are still to discuss before the board. This is his proposed edits, you know, not looking at them either yea or nay, I just put them in here so we can, so we have the points to discuss on this. So that's where we are. We're basically looking, I would say, look at the second version and see if, you know, do these changes, are these changes acceptable to you folks? Or are there ones we need to hash out a bit more?
Imei, do you have a copy of the, the draft that they had, or is that the same draft that I...
That's the same draft I sent you today.
Okay. Oh, you sent it to me?
I did.
You emailed it?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have it. Do you have a hard copy by chance?
I have a hard copy.
Is it yours?
Yes, but I'll let you use it because you can all look at it up here too.
Okay, I'll look at it.
So either one.
All right, why don't we do that?
Okay, so I assume nobody's had a chance to look at it?
That's true.
Let me, let me, let me say, Al, let me get a direction. These, in the email that I sent Imei this morning, these changes were originally in the doc, you know, given what had been discussed in previous meetings, Jonathan had put these into the documents. And Mary and I had some questions about the special permit and understanding the special permit. I insisted that they come out because I wanted to try to avoid special permit altogether. And so, talking with Imei, I put them back in with his language. And so, I just want you to understand that this isn't my language, this was Jonathan's language when the changes, because Jonathan is on vacation and cannot able to speak with us. More specific. About, you know, the north and east elevations and some of the, and the wing that we had discussed.
It's easy for you to look on here.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead and write. I can play notes on this.
Thank you.
Imei, what's in that, was originally written by you and Al?
Yes.
Yeah, let's let everybody... You still, you still working? Steve, you still working?
Yep.
Okay. Do people have comments about the guidelines, at least as they're reflected in the red line edition? Why don't you go ahead?
Go ahead. I'm not sure really what the difference between number two and three under general standards is.
Under general standards, at the beginning?
Yeah. I mean, they seem very close to each other. One of them just talks about modern, the other one, but they both talk about architectural design, shall we flag?
One talks about the comparison with the existing house, the other one is the design style.
I just see them as fairly close.
They meld them into one.
Yeah, I think so. That just makes them work. And the other one is adjacent properties. Can we give...
Sorry?
Two and three on a video.
Because they're very close.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And the adjacent properties, can we either give numbers or say immediately adjacent or some kind of understanding what adjacent really means?
Yes, we can say.
I mean, whether it's one across the street.
Directly abutting?
Yeah, or something, I don't know which one.
Jason draws on the properties across the street.
Across the street.
Right.
Either abutting or directly across the street.
Okay.
Because I don't know, I don't know it well enough to know which one to pick.
On Love Lane?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And the same sort of thing goes with number four, with the best examples in the neighborhood. Not sure which you want to highlight for the best examples. Says number four, landscaping building design should be consistent with the best examples from the neighborhood. My choice might be different from her choice.
Well, we'll have to decide what to do.
Right, okay, so we will do that.
Yeah.
All right. Then under what, once, it's crossed out for exhibit B, but through the rest of the document, there are a lot of references to exhibit B.
I know.
Uh, I just keep going, or?
Yeah.
All right. Under, same thing under C two, the second to last bullet, height of any addition. Can we just add or the building height, whichever is lower?
Yes. All right.
It says something similar to that in the next block, I think we should do.
No, no, but this is relating to the existing building.
Right, but it says any modification, okay, so you don't want to, okay, that's going to, that's going to be...
It's a self-referential.
All right. So it's lower than the existing...
Than the existing.
Okay, then you're good. The detailed photographic records may have been one year of issuance of special permit, you mentioned in the documents. Not sure why we're waiting one year.
It's a, it's a timeframe.
Okay, all right. Number three, design, landscape design elements, can we give a couple of examples of what that is? I'm not sure myself. You know, we're talking about plantings, rocks.
About landscape design elements.
Just not sure what that means, is it...
Well, it would be the, the existing engineering and landscape elements.
I can see it just saying landscape design period, so when you put a work elements in there, I think it means...
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Oh, you're talking about existing?
Yeah. That's what Love Lane's all about.
Well, you know, I understand that, but you can still...
Probably should say it though.
I'd just say landscape design period.
Okay.
Do you want to add an existing, sorry, to the existing site engineering?
I just take out elements, just say, to site engineering, landscape design.
Well, I'll run this little section. Can I ask, just because I'm interested in your ministry, why the lighting is so much less than the normal light?
Because there are two lights, when you add up together the thirty-two thousand elements, right now it's a single light. So it's a sort of a compromise. Instead of forty-four, it's thirty-two.
Then the taking away of subs, subsidiary or change to complementary. Can we say with the larger? Is there something you can do, because it should be subservient?
I've got a timer on that too.
Okay.
Okay, maybe we can wait on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Under number two, building construction, is that the definition, what you're saying? I'm not quite sure what that says, building construction shall be limited to designated building envelope.
There is on the plans a buildable envelope.
Right.
Designated.
Oh, building, okay, construction of any build.
Right.
Okay, I, that's...
Building construction.
Okay.
Okay.
I just didn't understand what, where you were headed with that. All right. Can we keep, because this is the one where they're building new, can we keep the bar about thirty-five feet above grade planes defined in the Westing, but no higher than? Or are we still good and underneath the hut?
We haven't reached any of the red...
Okay.
Redges.
So I'm just keep going until somebody says, you know, is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's, that's an issue that we need to discuss.
All right. I must, then we get down to preferred roofing materials and downspouts being of copper, I must, I'm not, so I don't think it should have to only be copper, but that might be a discussion. I think you can do some, some other ones. Let's see. I think you can do painted aluminum, I have, you know, I've seen that done well. I know it might not be the board's choice, but I think you could. Some, I mean, we have painted, we have painted metal roof and et cetera, so I mean, match that, I think, to board.
It's, it's, yeah, okay.
Let's see. Then down under E four, it's only be permitted when the blend board is convinced, can't we just say like we normally do, it approves the work as necessary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fine with that.
All right. Number five, it talks about generators, similar features shall be located within the lot setbacks. That means within the prescribed conform, you know, not in the setback itself, because it's in setback, but you're right. Which is a little strange, why it's...
Well, the usual terminology is when it's outside of the setback, it's, it's between the setback and the...
In the robbery line, yeah.
All right. And then under, last page under seven, plantings indicate that flexible boom boom shall represent a minimal be augmented in sight. Plan view landscaping, I'd like to put in something there about a field visit to make sure it works.
There's a period, there's a...
Yeah. Period. I'd like to say something here about a field visit to also check out, make sure it's done correctly, that's fine.
It's got to be in the decision.
Okay, where it is then? That's it.
The other one comment was number eight on page three. Driveway gates and gate posts of piers and cobblestone exit cliffs are given as discouraging. The whole other part of the document, we're really quite prescriptive, we're really very specific exactly what we want. This seems to me to be nonsensical or, or just putting it in is like discouraging. I'm not sure I even mentioned.
What?
Just because, you either should say not allowed under any circumstances, paint of death, or, or just not, are discouraged, just seems weak for the document.
Okay, so what would you say instead? I mean, the idea is to keep the street as rural and character as possible. It is, it is sort of non, not non-suburban as possible, so.
Okay.
You know, that's the, that, so that's the general character that people envision Love Lane to be. So that's why, that's in there.
I understand. You either have to say not acceptable, or, but on some of these older apartments, we did have, not case...
This is, this whole, we're looking at the whole street in this case. Yes, we had a historic area.
Okay, and there are no other examples on...
I can't think of one.
Okay, there are no other examples on the street?
I can't think of one.
All right.
Examples of what?
Of driveway gates and gate posts of piers and cobblestone. I think there are cobblestone exit strips on Love Lane.
There are on mine. There are on the new houses that were...
But they're there.
Why don't we just, then basically driveway gates and poster piers are not?
Right.
Are not allowed? Just disallow those and cross out cobblestone.
Okay. That's it?
Well, I think you all need to discuss about changes.
We do, yeah, I'm just looking for the... Tony?
Nothing further.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
On page two, D two, fifth bullet, standing or butt, same metal roof, natural copper, electric copper, or turn metal, or is that stain? Painted?
It should be...
I don't think it's steak.
You wouldn't want to paint it steak, we're all things...
I love that idea.
But stain painted is...
Or a...
Where is it?
The middle, or a steak painted, I mean, it's...
Medium rare.
That's a normal natural copper.
Turn metal or...
Something painted or medium to dark.
Steel.
Oh, steel.
I love spell checks.
I know.
Is that what you mean, steel?
I didn't put that in.
Sure.
Sounds like, I hate spell check, yes.
Well...
That's, okay, steel is fine with me.
Are you okay with, with the standing metal roof being painted?
Yeah.
And I think you don't need to say steel.
Yeah, just a...
A natural copper, electric copper, or turn metal, or painted and medium, so cross out of steak.
Okay. Okay. So, going on to the red margins. There were two, two things that, that the red marks said to me. First of all, the historical commission gets subtracted from the, from the process altogether. That's eliminate, that's eliminate, their participation is eliminated.
Well, they have participated.
No, I know.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think... What I'm trying to do is keep the D as clean as I can.
Got it.
So I don't want to complicate, you know, when we go to sell our particular property, I don't want to complicate, you know, we already have a D restriction on there, and that, that's fine, I think that one will be fine. But I, I want... Um, and that, that's fine, I, I think that one will be fine, but I, I want to be.
Wait a minute, let me back up, you say you have a deed restriction on there?
Well, not, not the deed restriction, the deed of, of the, um, single family homes.
You do?
Well, there's only two, I'm sure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's what we agree.
Oh, that's, that says it's a two lot subdivision, right? Unless there's something in here I missed.
No.
Remember that.
No.
One single family.
No, no, this is essential to, you know, because this was a huge town issue, because we had, because the, the flexible subdivision was a perfect subdivision within itself. And so, in order to get around that, and, you know, this is, this is really important for the town, it's important for the neighborhood, that we, um, put a deed restriction voluntarily. You know, it wasn't asked for by the town, it was voluntarily given by Mary and I to put a deed restriction on both the lot and the house, in order to prevent any multiple developments. Or to give, the fact that, uh, the subdivision was there by right, we could put the road in, which was never our intent right from the beginning. And this wasn't utilized to twist the arm of the town or the planning board by any means, and, in fact, I didn't, you know, I.
Wait, well, ju- just, let me, let me make sure I understand.
Yeah, okay.
The, the declaration of restrictions restricts it to two, the construction of two single family dwellings.
Yes, yes, yeah.
But I, I thought one of the primary purposes of this was to preserve the important historical elements of the existing house.
Yes.
But there's nothing in the restrictions that says anything about that.
No, 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 you asked me what I was referring to, you know, the, the other things fall under special, special permits. Right, there's no deed restrictions on the preservation of the home, right, we have discussed that.
The idea is, isn't the, isn't the, what we're doing here to try to, because one of the elements.
Oh, so certainly we're trying to preserve the.
You're doing two things, he said.
Well, yes, but, but, it, what this says is that, in order to try to, we don't have a deed restriction that, on the, on the, preservation deed restriction of the house itself.
That's right.
But the, but the whole objective here is to focus on that house, and to make that, remain the important visual feature of, of the subdivision.
Right.
So, in order to do that, you know, that, right now, it can just be knocked down tomorrow.
Right, that's what, that's what.
And so, and, just let me finish, so, without a deed restriction, the question is, and, 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 the deed restriction would prevent it from being knocked down. The question here is, under what circumstances would a teardown of that house be considered? If, if the whole, if everything here is focused on emphasizing the existing house, but it can be knocked down tomorrow, it's, 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 it's internally contradictory. So, all I'm saying is, in order to, to, to understand why the his, why the, why the existing house is important historically, we need to have some sort of idea of what's important about it.
Right, we discussed that.
But. We have, but, but, but now we're putting it into a document, and, and.
We have, right. Right, and it's in here.
Well, it isn't, I mean, it, it's, where is it in there?
Well, well.
Where is it?
There's more than. Just site plan review here, and, and I've always said that we would not accept any, any restrictions, uh, deed restrictions on the demolition of, of.
I know that, we're not, we're not, we're not requiring.
The house, right? Okay, I, maybe I'm not, I'm, I'm lawyerless here, so.
Right, what is the deed restriction you're referred to?
The deed restriction I'm referring to is that, um, the lawyers agree that anything trumps forty B, or any development we want with the red going in.
It's two lots here.
Local regulation does, yeah.
Right, it's right, is, is a deed restriction that only a single family home with an ancillary building be put on the lot. And, and that was done at great length with the town lawyer and my lawyer, that's the deed restriction I was talking about, I wasn't talking about a deed restriction.
On the house.
On, on the preservation, no, I, no, not at all, what it, well, what became of, of issue is that special permit is different, has more bite to it than, than a site plan review does. Am I correct? Right.
Oh, well, you, you can't deny site, under site plan review.
Right.
You can, you can condition, but you can't deny.
Right.
And, and again, if the objective is to, is to, is to try to preserve the house, or at least the, the important historical features of the house, as part of this flexible subdivision. But not to tie it down so that it could never be demolished, then what is the, what is the, what is the mechanism for, in, in the document for having that be memorialized?
It, it, it says. Okay, well, it says, it says here, which is, which is what we worked on, um. The demolition or replacement of all or any portion of the south and east elevations, which is the front of the main house.
Is subject to site plan review, that's it.
No, 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 shall be subject to planning board's special permit amendment, that's the way it's written.
Well, if I'm looking here, and.
Including windows, exterior, doors, siding details, and others similar to that, I acquiesced on that.
I'm looking at the first. I'm looking at the first page.
First pa, first page, lot one.
Your red lines on the first.
The second, the second bullet down there.
Well, what about the third bullet?
The third bullet is the north wing, which we discussed, which we have said is really, you know, it doesn't belong on the house the way it is, but it's, and it was done perhaps as many as thirty years after it was.
I, I can, I can go along with that, but my question here is, i- if we say that, that the portions of the south and east elevations shall, shall be kept to a minimum, subject to special permit amendment. The question will arise, what is it that we're, that's, that's important, that we, that the planning board would expect to review under the special permit amendment application? What are the, what are the elements and features of those elevations that are, that are historically valuable?
Which is the basis, for the planning board in the future, he's looking, what's the basis?
Didn't the historical society write a little memo about?
Yeah, they, no, 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 they did, they actually said that the main portion of the building, you're, you're, you're right about that, Susan, the main portion of the building, um.
No, they didn't, they.
I remember the letter.
Because.
That's right, they weren't specific about that.
I think the way, yeah, but they, they said, because it was an example of, of, of a federalist colonial home, although it was not significant, and there were other significant homes, more significant, and, and should be, we should be more concerned about preserving.
But what features of the house, I mean, what if, what if they want to, well, the commission can tell us.
And when you.
Like, could, could historical society create a job in commission?
Oh, okay, so, it's, it's, how much you get, yeah, I just don't, I, it's.
I think, I think it's good news for you in the future, because he's looking for guidance going forward to both sides.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just, I just don't want it to.
Where is existing? Beep call now, where is existing?
I, I, it, it's okay, it's, I, I understand what you're saying, Al, I understand what you're saying, okay, so, we, what, what's been accomplished is, we've given the board more bite. Um, you know, Tony has said he wants something with bite, this gives you some, this gives you some, yeah.
No, it's fine, but, but all I'm saying is, we need some guidance from, from the, from people that, we're not historical.
Okay, they need to be more specific than what's been given to us at this point, I understand that, but I don't want, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to lit any of sheets, saying, you know.
Right, I think he's looking at something very short.
I, let's, let's.
I think it's, I think it's a couple of paragraphs, but just what are the features of those, of those elevations that, that, that.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, I'm, I'm all right with that, I just don't want to get into complicating the deed too much, I mean, we're, we're, we're putting a lot of stuff in this, and I don't want to, you know, this is my life.
No, I understand.
The only thing that's different between the board and us is what we're trying to accomplish, which is preservation of the home, preservation of, of Love Lane, the dignity of Love Lane, which we're proud to live on. And, and the character of, of the town that that represents, it's a quintessential Weston, since, since we've always been on board with that, I mean, we've shared those common goals. The goal that we, we have a financial interest in this, this is our life earnings, and, and I just don't want to complicate things, and, and, and I'm okay with it, Al. And, and we can have the historical commission give an input, I just don't want it to be, I don't want it to be, I don't want it to be a thumb thing.
You don't want it to be a thumb, yeah, I think it's.
Well, this has come down quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm going to look at, you know, I, I don't want it to be thumb pages thick, because it complicates.
But this, this narrative has come down quite a bit since the first one, you know, last, last meeting.
Yeah, but it's still extensive, but I, but I don't know what precedent is.
Right, so, we are, we are, we are all working to get it to be smaller and smaller and more defined, I think that's a.
Okay, good.
Let me make a suggestion.
Sure.
Let me ask the, the commission to, to draft an exhibit B.
Great.
And you can have a look at it, and.
And then we'll, and then we'll talk about it.
And then we'll talk about it.
Yeah, I, I don't want to have to, I don't want multiple meetings over that, that's one of the reasons I, I crossed out exhibit B.
Is that reasonable? No. Yeah, no, I.
It says, you know, I just kind of feel, you know, my resources are going, you know, we, we want, we want to get this, we want to move on, we want to know what we got here, yeah.
So, so I, I picture it as being about that long of a sheet of paper.
Okay, I'm cool.
Um, and, and that's it, it's just a, it's just guides the, the, the planning board later to, to be able to focus on the historical features that are important.
And the honor of the home helps out.
Absolutely, otherwise it's blank.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Alright, and then the other thing.
And, and, and this was the most important element right here that we just went over, that was the most important element to me.
Alright, so I think.
Okay, and I have acquiesced, I, I, you know, Mary and I have been, you know, I, I'm, I'm not the pilot of the ship, I, I might be speaking, but I'm not the pilot of the ship.
Yeah.
So, there's probably now, that's on record, so.
Got it.
But, but, but we were at large.
As captain of the ship.
No, no, I, 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 I did sometimes send it, so I, I don't mind you taking over, I've acquiesced on that.
You're the first. The first thing, um, the, the, the other thing is, i- if, if the, I'm thinking about what you see when you drive down Love Lane towards the post road.
Yeah.
So, you, you come, you come down that street, and you, and you look at that house.
That visual is correct, yeah. Right.
And I'm thinking that, that whether you use the word complimentary or subsidiary, the idea is that you want the focus of the site, the viewscape to be that house.
Yes, I've asked for a, a site restriction from the, from the corner.
I understand, and we talked about that last time.
Right.
One of the things that I was worried about is that if the two houses are the same height, or if the new house is higher than the existing house, then that's going to take over the viewscape. And so, one of the, one of the reasons for, for worrying about height is that it seems to me that you want that house, the existing house, and its height to remain dominant.
I think it will, Al, I think we're about forty-five feet, and, and even, even with DeVito's house, he shows four stories on the same side.
Yeah.
I show four stories on that side.
Yeah.
You know, you, you have the basement, and then there's three stories, obviously, and it all shows on that side, it, we're pretty high there. Um, and I, and I don't know how the measurements are done, I'm not a builder, you know, and I know it's an average of front, back, and side, but, um, I, I think also the sloping nature. We, we've addressed this, and I think we've done a good job with the board, you know, both the board and us, and, you know, Leslie said, we're going to have this house setback, DeVito wanted the house setback. And that's why we moved that building envelope back as far as we can move it, really, I don't think, you know, without getting into the con con stuff. So, I think, you know, that's been, you know, instrumental and, and, and helping, and also there's a downward slope to that, so I think that, I think it's going to be hard, hard to overpower, really hard to overpower. I, I think if you put forty foot restriction, you'd still be lower, and, and I don't want it to overpower, and this is, you know, look, my, whoever brought this subject, let me introduce Darrell and Ken Nash. And, and, and Darrell has built some homes in Weston, more homes in Sudbury, than probably just about anybody, um, and I've al, Darrell and I have known each other for a long time, and I've always loved Darrell's houses. And, um, I think, um, this is a good representation, this house has just been built as, he also built one hundred, uh, Black Oak, um, which wouldn't be as appropriate as this home. But you would ask for an idea of, of what we're looking at, I do not want a straight colonial there, I do not want something that's tall, I want something with a, a roof line. And, and this is, this is an example of one of Darrell's homes, that, that, Darrell, do you have some others that I could, want to get down to speed?
That's good. Basically, it's up to the massive, the massive frozen up there, different materials.
You know, we have, we have stone, and, and, you know, it's the same.
Yeah. We would characterize this as a story and a half, by the way.
You would? Okay, well, then we, we're, we're, we're nailing it, right?
Exactly, that's right.
Um, so, so this is, this is something that wouldn't be massive and structured there, um, his homes don't look big, you know?
They're broken up.
And, yeah, they're broken up, and, and the style of it, with the stone, and the shingles, and the roof lines, and the gambrels, it's, it's really, um, and, and Darrell, feel free to, to speak, you know, more about this on the.
You're saying.
Okay.
He's following your lead.
But, but that's, that's what, that's what I envisioned.
He can pat himself on the back.
Yeah, no, he's, he's, he's great, and, and, you know, he has an eye for his quality, and that's important to me, someone who's willing to spend money and do the right thing on that lot, you know, that's important.
Got it, so, so, the, the, as, as long as we're on the same wavelength with, with respect to that, I mean, this, this, your, your vision, I'm trying to reflect in the room, what you, what you want to preserve.
Yeah, I think. No, well, I, I, I appreciate that, and I'm going to be playing the role, you know, once this house gets underway, my, my idea is that this lot will get sold pretty quickly.
Okay, so I. Yeah.
Um, given the nature of it, and, and, you know, um, we want something there that helps the neighbors, um, and, and increases all our values, I think, also, the, you know, I think we learned some lessons from, um, from the other two homes that were put, new homes. They're, they're very attractive, but they're right on the street, sort of creates, we need a driveway that, that, you know, gets the traffic off of Love Lane. Um, and I think, you know, some of those, I, I always wished that those homes were set back, but I, I, you know, this house is not going to be, a, a home like this is not going to overtake my home, it's going to, it's going to add to it, I think.
Um.
And add to the character.
Just, i- i- in connection with that, just one question, you're talking about the, the new house being no higher than the existing, measured from the same datum point, what does that mean?
I lose that one.
That, that, that was.
So, that was in my. That was my highest language with that.
Yeah, yeah.
What does it mean?
So, basically, you use the same, like, survey base, so I don't, I don't want to, like, you know, if there's some tricks you can play with, like, average natural grade, like, their average natural grade ends up somehow higher than his, and then, you know. The, the thirty-six on the new lot actually ends up being, if you were to transpose it onto the other one, forty-two, so use the same survey point, and, you know, this one's two thirty-five, this one's two thirty-three.
I got it.
Okay, can you explain that? Is that up for interpretation with your languages that I worry? I don't think so, I think the data point when they survey it, they have.
Okay, that makes sense. They're thinking that's a term of art?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, maybe I should say same survey. That's good, I like that.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't want that.
Does that, this is, this is. Yeah, just how they're, they're surveying, yeah, okay.
Somebody, yeah, and, but they still have approval on it, so it doesn't really matter. Yeah, Darrell, Darrell kind of brought up a good point here, you know, you know, once, once you have a set of plans, you can, I, I don't want to complicate the lot too much, and, and scare any builder away, and certainly don't want to scare Darrell away, but, you know, you can deal with, you can deal with heights, and, you know. This house will have a different plan than another house, as far as heights, and what he needs to do to accomplish what, you know, a desired outcome, and, and I don't know enough about it, but do you want to pipe in on that, maybe?
Well, only of the data measure, if, if Rob's house is at a lower elevation, and you're using that elevation, and then translate to lot two.
What he's talking about is that there are two, there are two measurements of, of elevation, and so, he, that, 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 there are two baseline, um, systems. And what he's talking about is using the same baseline system for both the existing house and the new, and the new house, that, that's what he's talking about.
Yes.
We're not saying it has to be.
The absolute elevation.
Right.
Yeah, the absolute elevation.
Because they take, they take elevation, the ridge height, from an average around the peripheral of the existing.
MSL. Right. Yeah.
Right.
And that's what I'm afraid of, might come out.
Existing conditions could be lower on Rob's site than on lot two, which you wouldn't want to force the height down due to the difference, natural difference of the two elevations.
which you wouldn't wanna force the height down due to the difference, natural difference of the two elevations.
But we do, actually. That, that's the point, is that we don't want the ridge of the new house to appear to be higher than the ridge of the existing house, even if it's less than thirty-seven feet, which is our limitation.
You've got a pretty good falling away grade from the road there, too. So I think that it's gonna be mute. Um, this is not what I consider a very tall. Um, I call this more of a gambrel cake style home. And we're hiding the second story under the roof line, which is bringing down the massive.
Right.
And that's why it makes it look attractive.
Are you gonna be able to say, well?
And I don't, I don't wanna lose the attractiveness.
This is, this is.
He's raising a technical point.
Because you and I are.
He's not raising a point.
Day one. And I'm sure it will work out over, over the process.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, my, the only issue about the stone wall, retaining walls, is you don't wanna see any retaining walls on them visible from the street, any, you know? And there won't be, because the lot slopes the other direction. So I don't see any.
Well, there may be retaining walls behind the driveway turnout area on a side light loaded garage because of the falling away grade. And I want, and to protect the butters vegetation on that side.
Yeah, the, the issue was not to see a lot of retaining walls from the street, because that would, that would tend to.
But behind the structure is more susceptible to that. Because we'd like to have a walkout terrace out of the first floor, walkout to an area to dine and so forth. And then maybe have a section that's walkout, not to force fill in elevation for the whole back. So it goes naturally with the, if it falls with, yes, falls naturally.
What I would suggest is retaining walls visible from the street.
From the perimeter.
Shall be, well.
The perimeter also means back.
Just the street, you know, so to. Um, shall be avoided if possible and no, no higher than eighteen inches. So you keep the retaining walls as low as possible from the street, looking at it from the street side. That's all. And because the, the lot slopes down.
Well, I don't see really any reason to have a retaining wall in front of this design.
I don't either, but I just wanted to be sure.
What I, what I see is that the house is gonna set back and it's gonna fall in elevation somewhat.
Exactly.
Um, we'd like to have a tabled off area, maybe a turnaround area in front of the house, but with single access driveway out, maybe, I don't know.
Right.
Because if you're going into a long driveway, you need to turn around.
Exactly.
And if not, then people are backing out three hundred feet.
Three, four hundred feet, right.
Which is, which, you know, whatever.
So I just keep that sentence in and just say visible from the street. And there's, there's no conflict there.
Fine.
And then, that's it. Those are my comments.
Well, I think we've come a long way.
We've created two lots out of one.
All right.
Good.
Mary me all over again.
And again and again.
All right, so I think we're clear on this. Sounds like.
Each time you create a new lot.
Sounds like we're clear on this. Is it?
I hope so. I hope so. I think, I think, I think this is one of the unique times at the planning board and, um, the applicant.
We're on the same page from the beginning. There were some differences as to financial things that would affect us. But I think we're, I think we're, we're okay.
We've been right in this station. So, um, all right.
Yeah, and it's a hard job, I think.
So, the next steps are historic. Or, well, to get a draft exhibit B, but, but for us, what we ought to do is draft the, the, the two decisions.
Okay.
Um, and, um, and look at those. And we can also look at exhibit B at the same time.
Okay.
So we don't spring this out any further.
Oh, let me, let me just say, I know you have a lot to do tonight. I, I wanna thank the Carters for coming, their butters, and, and in the rear of, of the two lots connect. Um, and DeVito, Dick DeVito, has played a role in this, kind of, kind of behind the scenes. And, um, he's all on board with what we're trying to do and to prevent any sort of massive building there by me selling the property as a whole or by some sort of development going in there, which we've done with, um, you know, deep restrictions and what have you. So, um, my, all my budding neighbors have been well informed of what's going on. And that's why I kept the snakes up, is to kinda keep everybody alert that something was going on there. And, and we've discussed, there isn't any pushback from the, any of the immediate of others. Um, and they're all on board, you know?
Okay.
So I just, I, I think that, I think that's an important element, a news to make.
Yeah.
You know, I.
I think that reflects the work that you have done.
Well, thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
Just had a few vacations on it, so.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we will look at the draft decisions.
January nine.
January ninth. What, we don't, we, the only, the, we'll try to get the, I'll try to get exhibit B to you, the draft, well in advance of, of, of the ninth.
Yeah, I won't be able to make the ninth meeting.
There's no need to.
We're in Disney World.
There's no need to.
Oh, that's good.
Just the two of us.
Don't ask us why, but, you know, we're doing it.
You like scared guys.
But it's just, that's just.
It's our idea.
Okay, good. I hope you have fun. Um, we don't typically take testimony. We just look at the draft decision. We'll, we'll send you a copy in advance so that, you know, in case you have any.
Yeah, and, and obviously, you know.
I want, I want Jonathan to review everything.
Sure.
And Jonathan can talk with me, if there are any particular revisions. But like I said, all, all the changes that were made by me were already, already written by Jonathan.
Okay. Right, so it should be over by the ninth.
Okay.
Um, you can celebrate it, it, is it Disney World or Disneyland?
Uh, Disney World.
Okay, you can celebrate.
Mickey and Goofy.
Yeah.
Okay, we're great. Glad you're there. Merry Christmas.
You, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a little good news.
Thanks a lot.
Sure, you're welcome.
Thank you.
We gotta bring my mother-in-law, she's, she's from Alabama.
She needs to.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Roll Time, and you, are you?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you're a freak.
Yeah, mobile.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's good, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Roll Time. Oh, too bad.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Nice job, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you did.
The town did well by all of us.
Well, you did well by all of us.
Very well.
That's awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
We're done, uh, thanks for putting up with it.
Well, this, you don't have the sheet to flip. All right, here we go. We're ready to start the public hearing. Is this a public hearing?
This is a public hearing.
On the rail trail and Concord Road intersection scenic right-of-way approval. Their proposal is to remove nine trees to construct and start parking for the rail trail. Who's making the presentation on that?
So I'll make an introduction. John will, John from Niche will make the formal presentation.
Okay.
Um, what we're doing here is building twelve parking spaces for the rail trail, which was recently constructed. And following the site visit, we reduced the number of trees to be removed from nine to seven. So we're asking for seven, preserving the maples that you requested at the site visit.
Okay.
And I'll pass it on to John.
Thank you. If this, make it easier if I also give you a plan to look at? Yes, probably. These are the six, six trees. So, as Chris mentioned, um, these are the design plans for constructing twelve parking spaces at the end of the southern and northern spurs on either side of the, the new asphalt section. So the north is.
So that is east to the right?
North spur.
East is down.
East is.
Yeah, east is down.
This is the rail trail.
It's actually flipped over.
That's what you'd usually expect.
Sure.
Yeah.
So if you're heading from the.
There's a nice.
Town here.
Right.
Your house more over there.
Yeah, we are to the left of that.
Oh, okay. Town center would be down this way.
All right.
Yes.
The lefty inside is sort of, um, sound?
Yes.
That's, that's our time.
So this is the southern spur, the northern spur, and they'll be separated from, the rail veh, uh, vehicles will be separated from the rail trail. And we're not gonna allow vehicles to drive across the rail trail. Fences, there'll also be access gates that Eversource will need to use because this is also Eversource's easement along the MBTA, which owns the old railroad bank. And the DCR has the easement for the rail trail within the MBTA property as well.
Trucks will enter through here?
I'm sorry?
The trucks will enter through here?
Yes, so right now they have a gate that's over on this side. And we're actually proposing to move the gate over here and then put another gate on this side. So from the southern spur, emergency vehicles can access these gates also, wherever Source can access the gate. This will be a gravel pad to allow infiltration of stormwater, but also for Eversource's trucks to access the trail if they have to, to travel to the east. And then a gate here so that they can travel to the west. So what the plans indicate in gray, in dark gray, are the areas of new, uh, new asphalt construction. So we had a great site walk on December eleventh, and we were able to, to look at this area and determine what the actual impacts to the trees would be. Uh, so these are the parallel parking spaces. So there'll be about approximately eight-foot widening of the roadway to allow for parking on that side. We'll be maintaining the existing hydrant here, a bump out. And then there'll be one more ADA accessible space created closer to the trail, a parallel accessible space. Our original design concepts that we worked out with the committee actually had cul-de-sacs that would allow vehicles to drive and turn around if there wasn't any empty parking or they could drop off their families or with bicycles and will find parking down town center. Um, in order to minimize the impacts, we were gonna need some small retaining walls holding up the slope. And it was gonna impact additional trees. So we worked through several iterations and came up with, with Ts or hammerheads. That would be enough space for vehicles to come down and make a three-point turn in order to drop people off or turn around if there's no available parking when they, when they come down these spurs. This one is pushed more towards the east and also has another handicap accessible space next to it. So this is enough room for a car to turn around and also allow for some space for another accessible parking. Uh, there'll be accessible ramps connecting from the end of the existing sidewalk across the paved area. And then another ramp with warning panels letting visually impaired users to know that they're about to access a, a driveway, which is actually the rail trail. Similarly, we'll, we'll be widening on the west side of the, the north spur to provide for five, uh, parallel parking spaces. Um, the roadway width is about twenty-two feet on this side. It's twenty feet on this side we're maintaining. So the way is the existing roadway here, and then this is just the widening part. Um, this is a hatched area and it'll designate as no parking. And this is also where the access gate for Eversource will be located. So there won't be any vehicles parked in front of that access gate. Uh, there is a, a slight extension of the sidewalk here with another ramp. Uh, so a lot of people that are on this existing sidewalk along the east side of the north spur to access the path, you know, accessible ADA compliant ramps. Um, based on our, our site walk, we identified the trees that needed to be protected. So highlighted in the blue circles are the trees that are all gonna be protected from construction. Uh, the red Xs indicate the trees that are going to be removed. And as Chris had mentioned, we originally had nine trees proposed to be removed. We made some modifications in this area, pushing the parking a little bit closer to the hydrant. And we're able to preserve these trees here. There was actually a fifteen-inch and a ten-inch red maple at the end here that we're gonna be able to protect and save. The first tree that's proposed to be removed is an eight-inch American elm right here. Additional trees, there's a thirteen, uh, thirteen-inch black oak. There's a, there's a third, large thirty-inch pine tree that's in a really rough shape, missing bark on one side. It looks like it'll probably come down on its own someday. So it was a recommendation of the site walk by members of the board to also remove this thirty-inch pine tree. Uh, there's another twenty-four-inch pine tree, a ten-inch pine, a twelve-inch white oak, and a thirteen-inch black oak. And it was the consensus, I believe, of the board members on the site walk that these, these trees weren't, weren't as critical. So that it was consensus that in order to construct this parking, that those trees can be taken down. The other, the other thing to note is the, uh, the green dotted line here is essentially the limit of work. So we're working up to pretty much the bottom of the slope to minimize the need or eliminate the need for any retaining walls. And also, we have also identified the limits of, uh, of the flagged boring vegetated rapids. Uh, they're located on the west side and the one on the northeast quadrant. Uh, we'll be doing some work within the buffer. So we'll be submitting notice of intent to the conservation commission.
Is there, is, is the plan to, to allow town emergency vehicles to use the Eversource gate to get onto the rail trail if they have to?
Correct. And, and one of the reasons for moving the gate to the south side was at the request of the fire department.
How deep do you have to dig to build the roadway, to build the parking spaces? How deep do you have to go?
Um, typically you'll have about six inches of asphalt on top of twelve inches of gravel.
So you have to go down eighteen inches?
Right. Most of the gravel out there, but I would expect in the outside of the railroad bank we might need to bring in some new gravel.
Right. Has arborist looked at the likelihood of those trees surviving that construction?
He's only got an arborist, which is.
Because you're introducing a lot of non-previous material that those trees aren't used to.
Don't.
I would be concerned, would you be concerned about that?
The thing is that the trees are on slopes, so that helps somewhat.
I see.
They're up a little bit.
They've got probably more than half. Well, certainly ones that are far left there towards the town.
Have we seen the specification for how you, quote unquote, it says, retain and protect? So what exactly is.
I think that is a very good point because it's so close to, I think that's right on those trees.
So do you have a.
So typical tree protection would involve surrounding a tree with fence, whether it's a snow fence or if you have a requirement for a particular type of fence. And then also, uh, putting, uh, wood slats around the trunk to make sure that there's no damage during construction.
They do something to the roots when you find a root, right?
Right.
They spray the root, or what does it, they do to the root?
Um.
When they, when they hit a root, they treat it very carefully?
Yeah, they cut them usually. They usually prescribe, like, you do a clean cut so that it's, it doesn't get ripped, like, with an excavator.
And then you.
And then around it, if you, like, really wanna be careful, you do, um, air spading. Air, so you don't rip the root.
Yeah, are you doing air spading elsewhere on the project, like in some of the butters land?
Um, there's no work on butters land for this. This is just, just within the town, within the spur.
So I guess, are you doing any air spading on the, along the rail trail anywhere?
Not as part of the parking lot project.
But it's part of, any part of the rail trail within the Weston confines?
No.
Okay.
At least not that we're, we're. They, they did everything within, DCR did everything within there right away. There's nothing on town property that, that we're doing anything like air spading.
And that's on a slope, so there's not gonna be any heavy equipment on the rest of the roots, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
And you could, if you wanna specify, we can put that into the contract.
If there's any heavy equipment in the area, right, it should be either not on the tree roots or the tree roots should be reinforced, right? tree roots or the tree roots should be reinforced, right?
Yeah, I mean, basically, I'm assuming, 'cause it, right now, the limit of work basically has it pretty much in front of the trees. I mean, there's one area here, it'd be nice if they can move it so that's, you know, down below the tree root. They shouldn't be going above the trees.
That would be really risky.
And here, and here they're gonna have to use heavy equipment because they gotta roll the asphalt.
Hmm, and it, and it's like, these two, isn't that a tickle?
Yep. I mean, this is, this is the, these are still...
This is, this is so close, I can imagine the bark being attacked without superprotection. Something really extraordinary on one of those trees.
I mean, the, the location of these trees have not been surveyed in the field, they're just taken from the, uh, what, the GPS, is that true, or have they been surveyed? Yeah, so they really are right on.
They're right on the asphalt. I mean, it looks like the asphalt will be right up to the bark on the third end.
So, yeah, I think the, yeah, I think it goes back to asking for superprotection.
Yeah.
Can you give us... Can we take a look at the spec which talks about the protection of the tree and we can see if that's adequate or if we'd like to beef it up? Is that kosher?
Yeah.
They don't have specs, so...
No, but you can forward that to EMI.
What possibility would be just to put it in the condition of the decision?
Okay.
If you have a specific, the city of the environment's...
Okay. I'm also thinking of giving spec to me with a good chance of it after we follow. If the contractor's been looking there as well as we know.
What kind of... Like your idea of giving us the specs you want and we'll put it into the bid document?
That way there's less back and forth.
Right, we'll put it into the bid document.
Okay.
What kind of a curb is around those parking spaces? Is it asphalt, is it?
It's, uh, uh, yeah, just an asphalt curb, so not granite, so it won't be going deep.
Is it actually gonna be curb at all, or is it just gonna be flat?
Just asphalt broom, just to capture the runoff from the road.
Just to satisfy my curiosity, why didn't you move the fire hydrant to the left and consolidate the parking spaces? Was it a cost issue?
It's existing.
Under the, under consideration.
Nothing else other than go on?
Well, I think it's off the table.
Yeah.
That might save a tree or two.
That's a really good point, Tom.
I think they're saving, but they're not digging up the street, though.
Right.
Figuring eighteen inches deep.
Yeah.
I mean, the ones on the top, these here, it's not gonna be effective. The only ones that might not be effective is that one, because everything shuts, comes down.
You might save the three on the left, is what I'm saying.
Right. But they look, one of those, I mean, they don't look as at risk as the...
Don't look as what?
They don't look as at risk as number four.
So who's on the stick?
I was...
We were.
We were on there.
And these, these, the circle trees really are, they're...
They're, they're...
Really wanna be... Significative.
They're significant.
Yeah. It's mostly just scrub up there, and it's sort of rare, large trees and...
Yeah, we've identified any trees on this situation.
Yes.
I mean, those were the ones that were still in good shape. The other ones, I feel like the fine's gone, you know, things like that.
Beyond what's moved on.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so, the plan is that we have Kim just write up the spec for how to protect those, those trees and, uh, the condition will be that, that Kim's spec goes into the bid documents.
Is Kim your, uh...
She's the landscape...
Yeah. You know, because on the site walk, we had it state, and to protect these trees, we didn't ask whether, we didn't talk about whether those trees were worth protecting. Uh, we didn't look at them specifically. So, we, let's say, we can, uh, add in the, those things into the site bid and then maybe we can come back to her and say, "This is what they are." Which ones are actually, should we apply that to?
Well, I think the ones you've called, you've highlighted, it's large ones, those are the ones we're talking about.
Right, the, the question is, are they, are they worth protecting? Is the...
I thought when we looked at...
We didn't really look at them when we were there.
You mean looking at the ones further north?
No, she, he means south. What he's pointing at right now.
We looked at these, we looked at these and these you identified.
Right, right.
These weren't gonna be, we didn't highlight those.
Well, we did, we did those at those, those were all skip, those were all had the key...
That's why they're marked in blue, I think.
And we saw the stakes, and I believe, you know, we thought the stakes...
I'll just take another, I'll just take another little drive-by there, but I thought those, I must, I looked at the ones on this side more than I looked at the ones on the, ones to the right, so...
What question, what do the little green dots refer to that line? Is that limit of work or would it disturbance?
That's, yeah, that's our, that's our, yeah, that's the limit.
Or, so, but is that...
We'll have to pull it forward on the trees.
Well, it, it's just, uh, limit of work, so, what does that mean exactly? Is that where the backhoe will be doing the cut?
Well, well, that's where we're, we'll be meeting the existing, so that's, that's where there'll be zero grade change.
And there'll be no equipment going past a little more work, is that right?
Yeah.
That's why I mean, it's, it's maybe one this way.
Yeah, we've got one right through that tree.
Typically what we would do, that would be the limits that would have to be re-logged and seeded, and I think we're calling one would seed, but I don't know if that's the right treatment underneath.
Yeah, right, right.
I mean, the woods, the woods are gonna take, take back over anyway, but at least it's not gonna be, just left as mud or gravel, so...
You know, just if you can move it down, there's one on the right side of the rail trail.
Just scroll over a little bit.
Far, that we can throw that away. Yeah. I mean, it'd be nice to get all the trees on the outside of the limit of work. And there's one which, see that one that's going through?
Add an impetus to not...
To the one that goes straight through a tree?
Yeah.
This is all, you can see our contours, this is the bottom of the slope, so this is all relatively flat, so limit of work just means that we're cleaning that area up, so...
Okay, it just wouldn't like not be a bad thing, right now it's going right through the center and try and just dip it down.
So I just didn't know what limit of work. If it meant just clearing superficial surface vegetation, that's one thing, but if it meant true disturbance...
Heavy equipment could hang out there.
Note says limit of grading, that's the thing.
Yeah, so...
So that was the question.
So that is a cut. It's possible.
It's, it's, I mean, as you get away from here, it's very minimal, so, you know, there's no reason why...
Well, that could be in the tree protection plan, what to do specific to that tree.
Okay.
Is that fair?
This is all relatively flat, so you could certainly, you know, put a steeper slope and...
So you know we're concerned, is we're just...
Yeah, it's just the way it's shone.
...about these guys.
Right. Protection with a capital P.
Okay, so...
So then you'll just give us the plans, the, the protection plans, and we'll put them into the...
Right.
When are you, when are you going out for bid?
I'm hoping, uh, hoping for early February.
So if we get the drawing comments, are you by first week in January?
Well, that's when we would be doing the, the decision or the permit for this, so yeah, we would have it by first week in January.
And you'll report?
Well, actually, second, check, the ninth.
Yeah, and that shouldn't be hard for Kim to...
No, I don't think so. I mean, they're, they're standard measures that you just...
You're right.
And it was a request at the site walk to provide final...
Yeah.
So the board wants to...
Yeah.
Okay. Good enough, any other comments?
We don't need to wait for the, your final document before we apply to CONCOM, do we?
No.
What document are you providing?
Tree protection.
Tree protection?
Are you a standard tree protection detail?
No, well, we'll get a tree protection.
Right.
We'll consult with our landscape consultant and...
Before we can provide you with one...
Do you know Kim Turner?
Right.
Do you know, you've dealt with Kim Turner before?
She was on the site walk.
She was on the site walk, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. But as far as the, the trees that they're proposing to remove are concerned, nobody has a problem with any of those, right? Okay. So the, the decision's gonna be, well, we're saying yes, taking down those trees, we'll give you pre-protection specifications, we'll, we'll review our draft decision on the ninth of January, and you should be good to go.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Hey. Strifing, could you do this to Tom? Let's see Tom, let's see. I'll try and see Tom. Okay. Any problem? Okay, for forty-nine Hubbard, our new assistant town planner, Dana Orkin is gonna take this one, so... Who wants to be our new assistant town planner?
Yay!
All right, so this is an application for, um, amendment to site plan approval to remove two trees. And who is speaking up to that?
I'm...
But somebody forgot their board book.
Yep.
Guys?
Gentlemen?
Yeah.
Mr. Ford?
Thank you.
Give me another one.
Was it not?
So, this is, um, forty-nine Hubbard, and this was constructed a few years ago, I think, in two thousand fourteen. We, we came to Woodford, and we tried to protect these trees when, these trees are up here, so this is in kind of existing conditions, post, post-construction existing conditions.
Yeah.
Um, there's five large pine trees that line the driveway. These two, these two right now are dead, um, and are dropping, were, were dropping these branches on the driveway and providing a hazard. We have a letter from a, um, an arborist that's, that said they were all in decline. So what we're proposing is that we're taking, we're not gonna take them all down at once because, A, they don't all need to come down yet, but they are, all are in decline, so there's the ones that are up near the road, um, have some damage at the lower trunk, not damage that was done by the construction, it's just they have those, um...
Or behind you, so it's...
Yeah, yes, like that. So, the arborist said all of them should be taken down, but the homeowner also doesn't wanna take all of them down, and now it's a cost thing, and also she likes trees, so she was like, "I don't wanna take them all down." But, the two that are dead, we wanna take down. So what we're proposing is to do it in a staged, um, a staged takedown so that we don't have to come back. We do come back and ask, um, or let you know to come up and see if you think that they're ready to go. And so what we have is a phased plant, and we have, um, replacements in the phasing. So, when, the first part is, is tree number three and tree number four, and when those two come down, we're gonna replace them with the trees in part in section A. As the other trees decline, when, when tree number five comes down, we'll fill it in with the trees that are listed in section B. And when number one and number two come down, we'll replace it with lots of sections. So we're replacing up at the top of the driveway with four pines that are ten to twelve. The owner has also already put in another pine here, I mean, spruce here. So these would be spruces on our pine side. Um, and one deciduous tree that relates to another tree on the property, it's a forest grove, so they're just kind of giving them something to see behind with the trees in the back door. Section C is more of an ornamental planting, so the tree that goes in is not gonna be as big of a tree, but it's gonna scale down to the house because this is one of the driveways. The other, and then below it there are gonna be some additional rooted denderms that already match the root denderms that are along the front house, so it's gonna be more cohesive than you know. So, um, in doing this, we're also, you know, reducing the lawn a little bit because we're gonna pull the bed out, and it also provides the homeowner with a little more screening from the road this way. So, that's, it's like a little...
Who was on the site walk?
I'm Kim Turner.
Thank you.
What's the maximum height of the spruces, or the mature height of the spruces that are building here?
They're Norway spruces, so their maximum height is, um, they're all gonna get there for a while.
Not our lifetime.
Yeah.
Seems reasonable, I believe.
Yeah, that is very...
What's the timing of all that?
Well, we actually, there's already, we have, no, to, to take down these two because they, the day after the site walk, like, you hung his ranch, fell off in the lawn, and she just was kind of freaked out.
Oh, that's it there.
Right, going down.
And it was, I mean, the whole thing, and the neighbor came over and he was worried about the trees.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So, yeah.
We talked about that when we did, and you said, "Well, these were just, it was a line, very tall, and kept them because it didn't get the scale dormed, but..."
And then the next round, come down, what's the timing of that? So the first...
It depends on the decline of the trees.
Okay, yeah.
It could be next year, it could be ten years. They just wanna have, they just wanted to have a plan in place because they know that it's attached, so that when they have the plan...
They have to come back and forth in time, so they can be susceptible.
Tree by tree.
And, and full education, are the pine roots that are there, they're surface roots or they're deep downwards for the most part?
They're huge, but they're all superficial.
Well, I mean, I, I, what I'm trying to, I remember that I believe that they're, they're, they spread out at the top, close to the feet of woods.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if they, some of them have deeper roots?
I don't think they have a tab, so I don't know if they have a tab.
You see them when that's over the bars, you know?
Yeah, and they have that sort of...
Round ball.
Right.
But we never did subspecify awful lot of understory planting on this, and that was what that property really needed.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to see, like, they are very interested in having a little, you know, privacy from the...
Yeah, yeah. You know, I mean, you met her, she was like, "I'd rather not take any of them down, but they're..."
They're falling down.
They're falling down, and, and, you know, she has three little kids, so...
Got to be done, so that's, that's, looks good to me. Could everybody else?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll look at this on Monday. So here's the decision on the ninth, everybody's okay with what different votes?
We can, we can go ahead and do many things like that are happening, I don't wanna...
Well, they have permission to take those two down already, yeah.
So, it should be all set and all, out with the knives.
Yep.
But I don't need to come to you. Well, I do miss you guys when I'm not here.
Your nose is growing longer.
I know.
I miss you too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, return if you want to the one you sent me.
About, can we just talk on the phone?
No, 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 about, uh, oh...
Last night, you're very...
That one, send me one of those. I sent you one back according to the...
Oh, I'm so attached to that.
It was one of the second paragraph.
Okay, I remember it all, my inbox is sure, I guess. They're all stacked up. I have Google, I have them all together.
With the elastic bands, virtual elastic band.
Exactly. Yeah, just put it off.
Okay, Greg, I think we're ready to... I noticed there's Noah Butter, which, which I would interpret to mean that everybody's on the same page now, or...
I don't know.
Okay. Um, we, we, we had a site walk, we, we look at the conditions, the, the viewscape, we haven't, we haven't talked about it and we haven't made any determinations on this, um... So I'm, I'm not su- you know, I, I don't know where things stand right now, maybe we, EMI, you can give us an update, if, if, or things, where do things stand?
So, basically, at this point, this is what I understand, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, Greg, if you misunderstand your proposal, but you, what we talked about when we went on site is you were looking, proposing to remove between one, or, sorry, to transplant between one and three of the, this group of trees here to roughly these locations here. And we, we had some discussion about how far back on the buffer they should go, but And we, we had some discussion about how far back on the buffer they should go, but basically using those to fill in gaps here. The trees we're looking at are these two here, this is a group of four, actually.
They don't make sense anymore, right?
You can't quite, yeah, with, with the fence. I think they do serve, this is a close-up of them. These are the trees that we're looking at.
So, they're new trees.
These, these are new trees, yep, and I'm standing just inside the fence here.
They were like planted in this hole?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, this is from the inside. You can see the fence behind it, right here. And just tried to get closer. And there they kind of are, here. And then there's one more here on the outside.
Looks like an orphan.
Yeah, it, it's kind of just left alone now, on, by itself.
So, is that the fence that you were proposing last time that's already in?
Yes. Yes. So, I, I do think there may be some purpose to some of these trees as they get taller to screen the upper levels of the house. But, you know, they're, maybe all four really aren't necessary right now. At the same time, you've proposed to build a fence along the property line here.
Is that fence in or not?
No, this fence isn't in, and this fence hasn't been approved. But I know that you, that was, you're, but you have contingencies on both these proposals, which I think you should explain, where, where your contingencies are. I do also, I got an email from the Butter. She couldn't make it tonight, but she did give me some comments on this latest plan.
Does it make sense to hear that, or does it make sense to?
Um, so.
Before you make the changes, we should hear what she has to say about this.
So, what she says about this is, she's, I'll, I'll read it directly, basically. I see proposed fence on the plans that seem to be placed to assist the screening. This is good. Finally, could you let, please let the PB know that I don't feel, even feel three planted trees is sufficient, given the amount of exposure, but one or two will not do. It has to be at least three. Also, to clarify, I never expected full screening, nor did I expect that I would not be able to see the house. As Angela Kearney said to me in person in the email, a wooded buffer is what we were told and thus expected.
Okay. What, what are you thinking of?
Well, she said she liked, she was like the fence. She said the fence is good. She would like to see three trees. Plan here, and I thought, I thought where we were at was two, but, and Kim also proposes two. When she reviewed this, she said two from the group of four here would, would do.
Right. All right, so Greg, sorry. So, you're, the, the plan is to do a fence along the property line, and what, what kind of a fence do you have in mind?
Well, I have, there are two proposals that I have, two options that I would have. Ideally, in my world, I'd like to be able to put, you know, a couple more trees, as we talked about being able to have them. There were originally down here, there were originally three trees that were required to be planted, and there were seven. And so, I, I sort of made a jumble of it because I didn't anticipate having this fence here, you know, to start out with. And it turns out that the market sort of demanded it. And so, I'm now left with these trees as, you say, and this one's a complete and utter orphan, you know, out here. This one is, should have been planted there in the first place. And this, and there's really no logic at all to, you know, one of these in the back. In an effort to try to bring this to a, you know, a conclusion, you know, when we did a walk on the site, I proposed to Emi that, you know, several of these be replanted, you know, in this location, in these two locations here, two of them. Because the distances, you can see, can't really read it here, but those are about twenty feet apart on there.
And they're going, they're, they're going to curl off and be big.
Yeah, they're going to be, they're going to be really big in terms of the, you know, the sideline. I, I am very surprised, pleasantly surprised, that she has no objection to the fence on there. I, you know, I said that very clearly. I said, I don't think you like it, but that's fine. I don't really want to put a fence in on there, but in terms of location, there is a demand for it. I have, you know, I actually have a design, which Emi will show you on the next part of this discussion that we have. From a buyer who's already had his architect design what he wants for additional fence. But there's a fence on this line that I'm asking for, you know, tonight as well, although it's a see-through fence. So, this is, but this is another, this is, this is stage one of the discussion.
Oh, okay.
And we're going to stage two. So, in the stage one of the discussion is going to say, okay, I'd like to either get one approval to do screening here, or two, having the fence go along the back. I don't think you need both of them, is what my general feeling is. You have a six-foot fence that runs here, but it might be that because of the fence being up, it makes sense to get, you know, move some of these anyway. So, I guess if you're looking at it from my first, in the first discussion that we're having here, I'd like to be able to have the option to be either, either do the fence and/or the fence, you know, or these without the fence. So, that's, you know, sort of, that's number one. And so, I figure we focus on that for a second. Then there's a whole nother discussion about a different issue, which I, I have talked about already.
Right, and the other discussion is the fence along the, the north property.
There are two. I'll tell you right now. I'll show you. Can you pull that up, the design, you want? I didn't do this. This is not, you know, this is not me on the thing. This is a buyer who's spending a lot of money and time on this. But this contemplates the two, the big, the big differences are, this is the same fence that we talked about. It's the two feet off going on the side. The difference, there's a difference to the fence right here. He doesn't understand why I boxed out on the outside and wants the fence straightened up to be the same line. So, we can talk about that later. But the, the big issue is on the back half of the line here, he wants to put in a, a five-foot-high, no-top bar, black, link, a link fence on the thing, to be able to, because he has dogs, you know, in terms of, and because there's nobody for, you know, ten, twenty acres in that direction. I'll show you what the, the, the link fence, it's actually not.
That's the, that's not conservation right next door, though?
No, it's not conservation, but I think at some point in time, Marion would want to.
Marion?
But that, that's what the fence looks like.
Who owns the next piece of property, the one on the other side where the fence is going?
Oh, it's twenty eight, twenty acres of conservation. Well, I don't think it's conservation. Has it been, has she donated it yet?
No, I don't know.
I don't think it's conservation on the.
Well, I can tell you this, in many efforts to go down to her, sending her coffee, et cetera.
You mean, you mean Rhoda, right?
Rhoda, not Marion.
Rhoda.
Rhoda, Rhoda.
Yeah.
She, and me basically begging her to, you know, consider selling me the property, she made it very, 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 very extraordinarily clear that that will never, ever, ever happen, and that at some point in time, she's going to, I don't know if she's donated it to, you know, conservation it or not, but it's, she has rail trail, I mean, trails, not rail trails, but.
Forest and trail.
Yeah, she allows forests to pass the trail.
She's been talking to me.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Okay, so he wants to put that, and, and if he has dogs, that means that he's going to want to bring that fence into the house at some point, right?
That's this right here. That's the blue line that he has going.
And he wants that to be the chain link also with it?
Yes, so the chain link goes, so there's no visual to it going, you know, basically where the, you know, condenser units are here right now, and then to the backside of the house. I don't think that line, when his architect did it, you know, makes a lot of sense. I think it's either, you know, something going, you know, further back because there's a window well that exists there that you can't go over it, and that's a bump out for a chimney. It doesn't, but the, the, I guess the point is, there is a logical point that it touches the house, you know, in terms of being able to have, you know, the, the dogs there. So, that's point number two. So, that was the whole, you know, second point under point number two. His, though, proposal, not mandates, but basically mandates the continuation of the exact same fence.
Right, he needs it for the dogs.
Going in that, well, he could use this one too in the back, which I would think would look better in the woods, but, you know, if, if, you know, Tia says she's okay with a six-foot stockade, I'm, I'm.
She said that a couple of times, actually. She said that at the last session.
Well, she did.
Yeah, she said that would be fine with her. Yeah, she said at the sidewalk too.
Does she want the fence and the trees, Emi, or one or the other, you don't know?
She, it's not really clear from her email.
I think she, actually, she said she was fine with a, with a cedar stake fence.
Yeah, she, she is fine with the fence.
Is she a two-story house? Does she maybe want the trees there to?
Not really. No, her living room looks out across the backyard there, so.
And also the play area, which is down farther towards the main street.
I'll take her at her word. I mean, she said it two or three times, so I assume she means it. So, the question is, fence and planting, fence or planting?
Well, Greg, are you thinking of moving those trees anyways because they don't make sense with the current layout of the fence? Or would you leave it be?
Well, you see, I, I don't have, you know, it doesn't seem that there's any continuity in terms of people's tastes in terms of, it just isn't. And so, I am not, I don't want to be able to have the situation where I end up having somebody who wants the fence for me then running back again to be able to do it. And so, I was very much hoping that I could end up getting an approval for either putting, either putting up a fence here, one, or two, being able to get back on the other spring, you know, that, some planting being done. And hopefully, I could get that planting done by either doing some type of a transition, or, you know, I consider, obviously, putting in a couple more trees or something.
Well, if the ones you put in originally aren't working too well, we relocate them next spring, makes sense.
Right, you're, yes.
I don't know if you can do it now.
Oh, no, you can't do it now.
Right, so, right.
So, you want either or?
I'd like either or, is what it is on that end.
And how many, how many trees are you looking at now?
Well, if we go back to the other plan, Emi, if we could do that.
So, does, how, how does transplanting work in terms of you're not owning the home by the spring? How do we enforce that?
It's certainly going to be an obligation. I live in town, and I live up to that, I'm going to plant trees.
I just don't know how that works.
I don't know either.
I mean, normally, what we do with those types of trees are, now, the bonds we usually do are for materials. And in this case, I imagine, the materials are there, but I imagine we just use that as a proxy, nonetheless. Two trees, what's the install cost, you know, they're about a thousand dollars, I think.
Well, they're moving.
Yeah, but that's why, it's, it's not for new, it's, we're using it as a proxy.
And, and whether or not it turns out that the guys tell me they can't be moved in terms of the thing, it may be that I have to have to buy new ones at the same height and whatnot. And the, the issue is, what I don't like in terms of the concept is saying that this is going to be either a hemlock, it's going to be a white pine, it's going to be a, you know, some other type of a, you know, fir, you know, that's there. Because I, I personally think when you end up taking a line of hemlocks and running them in a row like that, staggered or not staggered, it looks contrived. You know, there's not a natural look to it. And so, the hemlocks that exist here today, I think, are better to be offset by firs. That's a fir, that's a fir, and that's a fir. So, there's some logic to the, the concept. Now, whether firs or, if these don't get moved, you know, whether firs or white pines, I don't really, I don't, I'm a little bit, you know, indifferent. There's, you know, insignificant cost difference.
How long, how do you feel about two or three trees?
I'll talk, you know, I.
Well, he's, he's got what, you've got anywhere, you've got four you're not happy with. You were talking about moving two or three, right?
Well, no, what I said was, out here, we ended up having three, and there's an additional four that are here, wasn't it? I didn't, I, I was, you know, unhappy. I'm disappointed by this fir, because I had no idea why you planted a fir that close, you know, this guy said, well, it was the angler. This one now is outside the, the tree, and looks pretty stupid, I think.
And they're, and they're all firs, right? And they're all firs, right?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, okay.
Well, no, 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 no.
No?
No. There are, there are two different types of firs, so I don't, I can't look good with it. But they're not all identical.
Fine.
They're, they're two different types of firs.
I, I myself would rather see trees and fence, but I don't know.
See what?
I'd rather see trees.
Well, I mean, I, the, what he's asking is, because the buyer may want, he's going to need a fence there. If he has dogs, and he's, and he's closing the whole backyard with, with fencing, he's going to want to see a fence there. The question for us is, are we okay saying either planting or a fence? I, this, it's a little logically inconsistent if, if the guy's going to need a fence at some point anyway.
You're thinking about for a different vibe.
That's exactly right.
He's thinking for a different vibe.
And he doesn't defend himself.
Oh, in case that, in case this guy, in case this guy goes away?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay.
Or his dogs go away.
Right.
Or the dogs go away, or, yeah, there's a divorce, I don't know, yeah.
So, the trees are more.
Yeah, okay. But I'm okay either way.
Yeah, I'm okay either way.
I'm okay either way.
Have you introduced him to the concept of electric fence for stocks?
I want the fence and the trees transplanted, and, and absolute approval for if the man wants it, buys the house or whatever, that they can do their chain link fence. That's how I see it.
Wait a minute, that's a, okay, so, so, the, what, what Greg is asking for is either or, planting or a fence, depending on how things play out. You're saying, no, you want to have both.
I would rather have, yes, because if, I would.
But you're willing to approve the fence going all the way around and chain link.
Right.
That's what they, that's what the.
If that owner wants it, if the man buys it, if they, they.
What do they have?
As a black chain fence.
The black chain link fence without, without a.
Cap rail.
Cap rail.
Are you saying on both sides or just the right side?
On the area, if, if, again, he has these two fences to the certain.
You don't have to be a budget requirement on that, that's the only thing I would.
Yeah, we.
Just, just the blue, that's the blue steel.
We want the Butters' comment on that one.
And it's the logical configuration for somebody.
There's no Butters on it.
Whether it's this buyer or the next buyer to be able to get the approval, but.
Someone wants a fence on their property.
I don't, I don't personally want to put that fence.
As long as it's included in the high, and this is standard for us.
When people ask.
Trails and things like that.
Have you introduced him to the concept of electric fence for stocks?
You know, something, I have an invisible fence myself.
Yeah, we're fine.
You're saying you're okay with either or, cruel, unusual, or.
No, but I mean, they never, they learn not to get buzzed, right?
Next to.
I wish you could represent me with a guy, because I.
Oh, that's what he was saying.
Yeah, that's what he said, yeah. No, that wasn't me, I have one in my house.
You totally do that all, that's fine. I don't know, I don't know where it is.
I think they're safer than these fences. Dogs can jump over these fences.
Between the kids.
Hey, see, okay.
Sue's talking.
We already have the cedar fence, right, along the south path, right? Okay, and you propose to put the cedar fence to the neighbor and yourselves, that, that western border.
As option one, yes.
As option one, and then I like option one point five, put that cedar fence in, and remove some of those plants in the front that you are not happy with, and intersperse them in a non-soldier league-like fashion. But also, that at this point in time, we, I have no objection to a potential buyer. If he determines to exercise that, then he doesn't have to come back to us. He can put in the black chain rail, chain link fence without the cap piece that, on the northerly border and the connections to his house, if that deal goes through.
So, what you're saying.
What happens is, the next one comes for that in the year, because when you say that specific deal, I, I in a lot of ways hope the deal doesn't go through on the age of age.
If it doesn't go through, if you know how I feel on the board, if the board approves it, I mean, it would end with this particular buyer. Wouldn't have to, because he goes away. But if the next buyer.
The approval land with the buyer?
What?
No, no, no.
I guess it could, I guess it could stay.
That's not what you meant, that's not how it sounds.
It could stay with the property, but I'm saying that you don't have to put it in, that, but.
Oh, absolutely, I'm not doing that, I don't want that, I'm.
So, do we understand each other now?
Yeah, I, I, maybe you do, I don't. Are you saying that, that you, that there's a, you're going to, you're, you're okay with putting a fence in either chain link or cedar stake? No.
The rear?
No, no, you're not saying that.
Cedar, only to the neighbor to the west.
She wants the trees, she wants the trees regardless in the option.
I was getting to that part. I just wanted to get the fence nailed down first.
Yes, and, and right.
Okay, so it's, you're saying you're okay with the cedar stake fence on the back, and then planting the trees?
Transplanting or planting the additional trees.
Additional trees, meaning how many trees?
What, what did you want, three?
I, I don't.
There are two on the table.
Three.
Three. Are, are you okay with both? That's the question.
That's the question, I'm not sure.
Are you okay with both the stockade fence in the rear and transplanting or planting three trees?
I was trying to get either or, and I see, because again, when you put up a six, when you put the six-foot fence up there, these, it's going to be the same thing as this issue.
Sue, Sue, why do you need the fence and the trees?
Yeah, I wondered the same thing.
Sue.
No, no, why, I'm asking, I'm asking to have it either or.
No, I'm, I'm wondering, I'm with you, and I'm wondering why Sue wants both.
Yeah, me too.
Because it is clear, it's a clear shot through there, and you can see everything, at least this, over the years, these are not big trees, would fill in.
No, but if you have the fence there, why do you need the trees?
Because the fence doesn't block completely, not like trees do, but doesn't go up to the, beyond the first floor.
It's a height issue.
It's a height thing.
Well, it also do remember that that fence was higher, because some of that property on Greg's side is higher than the part on, on Ian's side. And I think that the trees in the future will block, will, will mask enough of that house that you don't have to block it out a hundred percent. So, I could see going one or the other.
Do you think.
What I love, what I love more of everything, yes, but I think there's a.
But, hang on, would you see three trees as being adequate? See, I think three trees is not all that adequate. There's a, if you look at the whole. There's a, if you look at the whole area.
I thought we found two holes up top and then one down by the swing sign.
We did.
I thought three would cover it.
I mean, yeah.
We did?
Yeah, that's what I remember.
Okay, 'cause I was hearing things like rhododendrons and other things, little stories.
You know, look, well, take a step backwards for a minute. Where, he's, he's done everything we asked him to do.
Okay.
He's, he's gone through it, you know, it's, it's been checked, what he's done, it's been checked off by our landscape architect and by our, our, our planner. He's offering to do something additional beyond that, because the butter has an issue. After everything's been signed off on. I, I, I think we, you know, he, I think we, we, if, 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 if there's a, at some point, the neighbor has to do something for herself, you know? We, we did our best to, to, to make conditions that, that screened the house from her property. We're, we're going beyond, above and beyond to, to add something after the fact, to, to help her, her escape. But at some point, the, it, it, you know, it's, it, we have to say, when does it stop being fair? You know what I'm saying?
All right, I get you. I get your point, I get your point, let me ask you, what would you prefer to do of the two options? Would you prefer?
Whatever sells the house.
Which would be what?
I would prefer to have the, I prefer to have the trees.
To move the trees.
So, I put in the three trees, I'd rather do that, I don't like the fence concept, I still don't think she'll like it, but again, I can't get in her.
But he may not have a choice.
That's my point, we just. That's why I need either or, Susan, because.
He'll do whatever sells the house.
It's, thank you, I'm not, you know, I have.
Can we just ask Tia, I know she said she's fine with the fence, but has anyone asked her what she prefers, the fence versus the trees?
No, 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 hold on.
That's not, yeah, that's not on the table. He's trying to respond to a buyer.
Is he willing to do those trees?
The only thing I would ask is if we can make sure where the trees are located, to make sure they do, take care of.
Wait, I'm sorry, the buyer has nothing to do with this.
That takes the rest of the stuff off.
I'm just saying, when you do try, when, when Greg does transplant the trees, if we can basically be there to make sure, we put them in the gaps we think were blocking.
Well, that's what Kim would do.
Kim would do, okay.
Okay, so, up here, we just feel that, fine, that this is cut and dry.
Three trees, three trees, move to the back. Be conifers or whatever they are, for a mixed variety.
Either existing or equivalent.
Same size as the, but, yeah, if they can, all right, fine. All right, so, just perfectly clear, in terms of thing, either put in the three trees, you guys end up having the ability to be able to put the locations, I'll only know the three are generally where they are, on that, or we end up putting in a fence.
Cedar stake.
Cedar stake, okay, no, there's no viable.
Six foot, I thought the cedar stake fence was off the table.
Yeah, I thought we were saying just trees.
No.
It's either or. It's either or, Steve.
Okay.
All right.
Tia has already said at least three times, twice at the hearing, and then once that we heard on the sidewalk, that she'd be fine with a, with a, with this fence like the one he's putting along the, the South Avenue. She said it three times.
Exactly, it's either or.
So our decision is either or.
Either or or both.
Yes, you might wanna do both.
Yes, I might wanna do both.
Either or or both.
Either or.
Multiple choice.
We cannot prefer the trees.
Pardon?
We cannot prefer the trees.
We, we thought we could.
No, I'm just saying, because Greg, you said a moment ago that you were not against the fence either, and I think, we, I'm sorry to do this, but I think we prefer the trees to the fence and agree with you.
Yeah.
Let's see, I, I, I have no, I, I can't tell, there's not even a agreement on the board which is better, never mind when I get a buyer to come in.
We prefer the trees, I think.
But that's.
You want the flexibility to be able to respond to the buyer?
Exactly, that's the whole situation.
So we must just say either or?
Or both.
Either or?
Either or.
Fine.
Either or.
Either or.
Thank you, I'm not, now, just perfectly specific, in terms of, there's no issue if they, he ends up in terms of the five foot, even though, God forbid, I just don't like it, but it is what it is.
Okay, now, this is where, this is where it gets interesting. I don't, I don't have a problem with a chain link fence along the, the upper property line, but you, looking at a chain link fence from Fields Pond Road, it could be, especially one that high, five, a five footer.
You're talking, you're talking here?
No, just right there.
In the driveway view.
Yeah, right there, that, that.
It's concerning.
That, I think, maybe it would be better if he, if he considered a different kind of fence, more ornamental than just a chain link fence, it's gonna.
I agree with you.
Just there, not on the bottom side?
Well, where can you see it on the bottom side? It's already a, a, a six foot high cedar stake fence.
No, there's, there was going to be a black chain link fence from the house to.
Yeah, but where can you see that from anywhere?
We'd have nowhere to see it.
Oh, you can't see it?
Yeah, there's a fence up around.
That's five feet, this one's already six feet.
How far?
But you can't see it from Fields Pond Road?
No.
Well, here's Fields Pond Road, so it's gonna be behind here.
See, it's behind there.
Yeah, I have to agree, you don't see it.
If you have X-ray vision, you can see it.
But he, but he still needs to go to the building department to get a permit for the fence, right?
Yes, you do.
Right, so.
So what I mean.
Yeah, so if it's, yeah.
At the end of the driveway, that would.
Why not the same cedar fence that you have everywhere else?
I, I, I'm, I didn't go to, I didn't bring an architect in.
I mean, to address houses, I'm sorry now.
I, I, you know, I think it could be a, a metal, you know, fence with.
Steel.
Iron, iron, wrought iron, you're gonna paint it.
Black metal.
All right, that section, I, I, I can, I don't like it either.
Right, I, that would be, it wouldn't really cost him any more money, and it would just look a lot better from the street.
Okay, and then.
More residential instead of industrial.
Exactly.
The very last thing, can you pull back a bit, that?
This one?
Yeah, that one, yeah, that one. If, if you notice here, the, the, the existing fence goes like, yeah, actually, it's up, but, goes like this, and then down across the road here. I thought I had a brilliant idea of being able to make a place where, you know, the landscapers could come and access, so when you were doing landscaping every week, that they weren't parking and clogging your driveway. Well, you know, this particular buyer thinks that was very foolish. Still, it's a good idea, but, the, so I walked with Emi, and we took about, and talked about straightening it out again in the same distance, you know, as opposed to having, you know, this.
I'm fired, oh, there's no trees there at all. There's no trees, it's an old driveway, I probably, if he had asked me that, and with the approval, and it was nothing else, I would have approved it administratively. As it's still a fence along the front line, and it's, doesn't really make a difference.
But you're not necessarily gonna do it only if that owner wants you to do it.
I think.
Potential buyer.
Again, potential buyer.
It doesn't matter what's.
The first one actually won't give all the, he, he comes, you know, basically says, I'm an idiot, you know, so, you know. Maybe some truth to it, but I, I don't, I still think he'd like having that there, to have access to come in, but. Everybody's got different tastes.
We're all good.
We're, everybody's okay on that, we're good.
Okay.
So, just a recapitulation.
Please, don't do it.
Either or.
Don't do it, don't do it.
Just do it.
Don't open Pandora's box.
And so, three trees?
We're, we're okay, and some people are less okay than others, with either. That's right, some, some of us are, are making the sacrifice to, to, for three trees or a, or a cedar stake fence in the, along the back lot line.
Or both.
All right.
That's what I heard.
Okay, or both. Or, or both, and then we're okay with, with the, the straightening out the fence along South Avenue, we're okay with a chain link fence on the, on the other property line. We're okay with a chain link fence from the cedar stake fence to the corner of the house. Our only condition would be that that, that the section of fence from the upper property line to the house be decorative and not chain link.
Okay, can I just ask one question? If a proposed buyer wants to do that decorative, you know, wants to do, has a dog, and has to do the decorative fence on the north side of the house, and therefore wants to do the decorative fence on the south side of the house, and not the chain link fence, is he or is she allowed to do that?
That would be, I would consider that to be de minimis.
Okay, good.
And administrative approval.
Excellent, excellent.
And, but the only caveat would be that if somebody, if this buyer or somebody else wants to put that decorative fence in, he has to come back to us and show us what the decorative fence is.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So moved.
All right.
I second.
On the paper, all right, okay. So, we, we'll look at the draft decision on, we'll look at this one on the next, on the next, okay.
Next year.
Next year.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you.
Goodbye. Good luck with that.
Okay.
All right, Steve has reviewed the minutes from seven twenty-five.
What do you think?
And there's just one change that made sense, so.
Somebody wanna move the supplemental minutes of seven twenty-five?
I can't do this.
So, no.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm in favor.
All right.
Good, town planner report.
Town planner report.
Thanks, Kitty.
Thank you, Kitty. Okay, so, we straightened out our meeting calendar at the last meeting, so there they are, ninth, twenty-third, sixth, and twenty-seventh, for February, going into February. I'm happy to report that MAPC is starting work on our water master plan, I'm getting them data of our water usage. Data's gone through all decisions and looked for the irrigation condition and pulled those out, so we can start finding those correlations. So, I'm trying to get them all of the data they want by the beginning of next year, and they can start the analysis then.
Ken, do you have what the scope of that master plan is? I'd like to be able to report to the sustainability committee about what's happening with that.
Yeah, I will send it to you.
Thank you.
I think I'd include recommendations on what to do about watering things in the town center.
No, that was not part of the scope at the time we did this, yeah, at the time we made this proposal.
Okay.
Traffic planning, Tony and I are continuing to talk about that, and we'll talk about that at the next, later July meeting, but we're.
Give them an update?
What's that?
Give them an update.
Yeah, we'll give you folks an update at that meeting.
Invite some other folks in, I think.
Yeah, invite some other folks in. Um, they, there's two state level plans going on right now. Metro Common is the regional long-range plan for the Boston metro area, including us here. They are kicking off with a session in Salem, but they're gonna be doing them everywhere with just a listening session, so. I'll, these are two plans I'm really gonna try and keep us updated on and get you.
Either transportation only, or?
No, Metro Common, Metro Common is a full land use, you know, plan. Destination twenty forty is, is the Metropolitan Planning Organizations, that's their long-range plan. They just came out with a statement of need, a need statement for, a draft need statement for this, and they'll be going on with other public comment periods. Um, recalling the last time, the last long-range plan we looked at commenting on was, I think it was Vision twenty forty or something, that was for the infrastructure investment in the rails. Um, and we basically kinda got that too late to really make any meaningful comment on, so, I'm bringing these ones up now, because going forward, I wanna have these, so that you have it on time to get something in a meaningful comment, like, you have it ahead of time.
Wait, do these things?
Yes.
Perfect.
We use it for budgeting, we're just.
That's why it's, twenty forty is the destination, so if you do it.
That might have, presentation I heard today from the Governor's Commission on Transportation.
If you don't sell the transportation program.
Twenty forty, are they integrated with that, or do you know?
I don't, I don't know, I'm honestly, from what I've seen from the funding teams, no, that would be my guess, I'm sure they're aware of it, but I don't think there's.
So, there's a whole chapter of assumptions they make on future planning for Massachusetts, land planning, and they say, based on that, what do we need in transportation? Should it be nice if they were coming to the same?
I agree. I absolutely agree.
Maybe that's the question we have for Chris, for the first questions we have for Chris when we talk.
That's a question for Chris, and I think that's a comment to give back to the NPOs, they do this.
I mean, are you optimistic that this is gonna, that any of this is gonna go anywhere?
Uh, it's my job to be believing in plans, so. So, yes.
He is a planner after all. He has middle name.
I mean, if somebody can solve the one twenty-eight corridor, yeah, that would be a miracle.
Well, they're making budget decisions.
Oh, it can get worse.
On, on the.
On transportation, they're making budget decisions.
Gridlock all day long would be.
That's right. It was twenty-four seven, they're gonna say.
Um, we have any committee updates that we, anyone wants to give out?
Sustainability committee, but now, we're trying to react to smart credits for solar panels on the field school.
Okay.
There seems to be the ability to do it this time around versus last time around, when they built the school. And we're still trying, it's sort of like, once we came into existence, everybody who'd been holding on to ideas for the last five years has dumped them onto us.
Okay.
So we're trying to sort through a lot of different things right now.
Gotcha, all right.
Town Center, what's happening?
Um, it's going to be rebid, I think, after the first of the year, and after changes, the changes are made to the plans.
Did you guys meet as a, as a, as a committee?
We have not met, no, but, they wanna have a two-month bid period, so I think they're looking to get the bids back in the beginning of March, and then having a town meeting in the middle of March.
So, it's going, it's going out to bid on January third.
On January third?
Yeah, so the question is whether they will have had a chance to do anything.
Well, I assume so.
For the package, well, it's only been.
There's been no meeting.
Is it, is it, I guess, I would expect the committee to be voting on this, the fact that there isn't a meeting or a vote, is that, you find that on toward?
I don't know, I haven't really thought about it, I, I, I don't think, I mean, Steve LaRocque is not gonna do anything on toward, so, I don't know.
I just, I find if you have a committee whose purpose it is to do it, that there would be, they would, you'd be meeting, say yes, is what you all agree to, and, you know, has, has, you know, would be viewed, I, I just, you know, the, either the committee is working or the committee is disbanded, I just, it seems to be sort of sidestepped right now.
Yeah, it's not disbanded, in fact, he wants to continue appearing construction, so, it's not disbanded. I don't know that the committee, maybe he thinks that the committee doesn't need to vote on the changes, and they're just making them, I can ask him, I'll send him an email, I really don't know.
Well, I can ask him, I'll ask him tomorrow.
Why, you're in Seattle?
Well, we're having a, a joint committee, coordination committee meeting. Coordination committee for the old library, JST, and, and that corner of the town center plan tomorrow, to try to, we've gotten some information back from Burke Landscaping, there's, there are several issues with respect to those three pieces that need to be sort of sorted out, and so, you know, maybe we could, you know, find out then where, where things stand on the, on the, on the revisions and what the flexibility might be. Burke, you know, I'll be, I'll be frank about it, the sense that we're getting from Burke, working on this coordination committee, is that Burke and Nish are not always on the same page. I don't know if, if you've found that on the, on the town center planning committee, but one of the places where it's, there seems to be sort of a difference of opinion. one of the places where it's, there seems to be sort of a difference of opinion is on the part of the road to the west of the tavern. Right now, it's, you picture it as a, as a stone wall on top of a ledge
Right.
that runs along to what used to be Tavern Side Park, where it goes down and then it's more or less flush. That's gone, all of that, completely gone.
The ledge?
Everything.
Was it gone in the plans we saw?
Yes, it was. The last coordination meeting we had, Burke did sections through, through that, that exact area between the post road and the, behind the wall. And if, if the alignment changes, the way Nish shows it, that all has to go, it's all gone. And I don't, I, I just, you know, Burke doesn't think that's a really good idea.
Right, yeah, I agree with that.
Well, it's gonna be that way if, if it goes out and gets bit out the way it's drawn.
I'll ask Steve about that.
Well, I'll ask him tomorrow.
Yeah.
But those are the kinds of things, I just want to be sure that we, that, that that level of detail is, we, we consider that. Because I think everybody in town would be absolutely, their, their hair would catch on fire if they saw that just getting scraped down to nothing. You know, that's an iconic part of the, of the town center character. And it's not necessary, all they gotta do is keep the curb line where it is.
Right.
So.
Well, that, I mean, I know that the committee wasn't that friendly towards bikeability, but they did volunteer to have a bike expert look at the bike friendliness and maybe make some adjustments if possible. Are they gonna do that before they go out to bid? That was the commitment to me.
I don't know that there's time, but again, I can ask him.
But that's what they committed to, I'm just saying.
Right, there was that-
They said they'd let a bike expert look through it, see what tweaks they made. For residents, especially to and from a train station, or from the rail track.
Yeah, I don't know, they're gonna do a lot of stuff.
And we also asked, we also asked that they use a drywall construction rather than a mass BOT. And there's a spec which we corrected and revised for the Marion Street sidewalk almost a year ago, which could be used, and I don't know if that's been brought forward. There, it's all this old stuff that was on that list that the planning board had. So there are a number of things that, you know, there is concern about. And last I heard from the DPW is that those corrections were still sitting on a desk in the DPW, so I don't know where that's gone.
What, what, Selakman was saying last night, I went to the Board of Selakman meeting where they were talking about, you know, the next steps on the town center plan, and they were talking about the, the fact that this is going out January third. And the reason it's going out January third is because there's, there, there seems to be a hard deadline to get a special town meeting in the middle of March. And that has to do with, with phasing the construction. Apparently, there's a, there's an enormous difference between starting the, you know, in early April and starting in the middle of May. There's a huge difference, I, I don't, I guess I don't, I don't understand why that five week period is so critical. You know, okay.
Because there was discussion also about it being a one topic town meeting, special town meeting. Those don't tend to be as, I don't know, you know, they're, they're hard to get people there or they cost more or whatever considering especially that the May town meeting is not that far away.
It would help, I mean, it would seem that, that, that mid-March deadline for a special town meeting is driving the whole program backwards, you know? And the question is, why is it so essential to, you know, I, I'd really like a clear picture. And I'll ask Steve tomorrow, and Harvey's gonna be there at that meeting too. What exactly is it that makes that such a critical deadline? Why couldn't we do it, why couldn't we just bring it out to May, whatever it is, sixth or ninth? And then we, that would give us a month to do things like what Tony's concerned about, you know? So, we could, I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow.
Because I mean, it'd also help to get Verizon on board too, because they-
And we can help, right? I mean, Emi might not have enough contacts that we can get somebody to the table very quickly. In my opinion.
Right. Alrighty, what else?
That is it?
That's it? What do I think?
Sounds good.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry New Year.
We all have a Merry Christmas, there you go.
And a germ.
A germ.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
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 I still don't-
Really?
Yeah, I mean, send it to you.
No, but I might have sent it to the tab with the tablet crank.
Oh, okay. Every time you leave, you get emails and you say, oh, I don't-
You don't have keys yet, do you? Yeah, okay. You want to start, you know, you want to grab my keys and then- Oh, okay, so you're here to just walk out, okay. Nah, it's, it's not much really, it's just these things, I put it all in a bag and, all good, so, tomorrow, you're not sitting here late.